Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, June 4th, and I'm calling to order the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Council members in attendance include Councilmembers Nuueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Sala Houdin, Councilmember Anderson. Online, we have Council President Kritzler and Councilmember Fields, and I am the Presiding Officer, Councilmember Stewart. We have five items on the agenda tonight, and the first is approval of a supplemental agreement to the contract with HDR Incorporated in the amount of $242,906 for the Evans Creek Relocation Project. Introducing this item is Deputy Director of Public Works, Fangi Garcia.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. The FEMA, FEMA agency determined recently that the conditional letter of map revision, the CLOMAR, is required for the project. This contradicted earlier direction that we had, and so this would delay the original start that we had assumed for, to summer 2025 for the earliest. This supplement is for additional work over and beyond what was originally anticipated. The former project manager had previously agreed to some of the hydraulic modeling and permit preparation elements with our consultant and to continue progress on the project in expectation for this supplement. The requirement for a CLOMAR is additional work from the consultant and for permits in the middle, and also extends the project timeline. This also includes negotiations for project acquisition that is more involved than we initially assumed. We are adding assistance with private property relocation to the agreement and because currently staff in our real property group does not have the capacity for this work. The final advertisement, ready plans, and specifications and estimate will require additional work by HDR to respond to any changes that come from the FEMA and King County permit conditions.
Thank you for that introduction, Deputy Director Garcia. Are there questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. So, reading through the memo, it was clear that a lot of these changes are because FEMA is requiring them. Is there any additional money that we're receiving from them because of these changes?
I don't believe so. The project manager is online. Rob, do you have anything to add to that question?
Yes, hi, this is Rob. If I can turn on my character like me too. No, there is no additional funding that we are receiving from FEMA because of this.
Okay. Are there, I'm sure you guys are looking out for grant opportunities to fill in the gap that's going to happen. If there are those opportunities, how will that move forward?
Well, that would delay...
We're not looking for grants.
Yes. We want to move on this project as soon as possible, as this is an important project to the city.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the council? I just wanted to ask, oh, I see Council President Kritzler.
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks for your work on this. I'm just curious to understand a little more. So was this a change in policy, or was it more that we were waiting for a response from them and they, and then it was just, just came delayed with a surprise decision from FEMA?
Rob, do you want to take this one, or do you want me to say?
Sure, certainly I can. So, yes, originally FEMA had given us direction that they would be satisfied with a letter of map revision, which occurs after a project. And because the way, based on the hydraulic modeling, we anticipate zero rise in the floodway with this project, and it, what changed their mind is that after looking at, they felt that the, because we're physically, even though we're moving away from existing businesses, we are physically moving the creek towards other properties, whether they're vacant or not, that that would trigger the, the conditional letter of map revision, which occurs before the project. And so that was, I don't know if it was necessarily a policies change, I think more of an interpretation on their part.
I would agree to what Rob just said. It was a surprise to the city. We had always thought we would go with the first, what Rob was saying. So, that is why we're coming to you now.
Well, thank you for, for the details on that, and it's too bad that this project's being delayed, because I know we've been working on it for so long, as you can see from the timeline, even on this consultant agreement signed in 2013. Actually, I have kind of the opposite question of Council Vice President Forsyth, which is around, around grants. I know we do have some grants for this. Does the delay on timeline put any risk on some of the grants? I know we have, for example, I believe, a cooperative watershed management grant.
Yes, not to my knowledge. Emily Flanagan with our environmental group is more attuned to that, but from everything I understand, it is not, the grants are not at risk.
Okay, great. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just state for the record that council, we did receive the information about this delay in our most recent emailed CIP update, and then there was some email follow-up with Director Burr up it on, on that, and assuring that the state funding, especially that we all worked so hard to, to receive, would not be put at risk with this delay. My, my final question was about the contingency, or actually, in increasing this request, is our contingency covering that? I'm not sure if you said that already, or if this is new money we're going to be taking otherwise out of the CIP.
I believe this is new money coming from the CIP. This is the request.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So the request for this item is to move forward to consent on June, June 18th. Are there any objections to this item going to consent? Okay, seeing none, I think we'll have this back. Thank you so much. Our second item, we're going to stick with Deputy Director Garcia here, for an inter-local agreement between the City of Redmond and the City of Bellevue for intersection improvements at Northeast 40th Street and 148th Avenue Northeast. This item is also under consideration for consent on June 18th.
So the City of Bellevue approached the City of Redmond because they had a project within the vicinity, and asked if we had wanted to participate for, that included the paving of the intersection of 148th and 40th. The current estimate for this money is $275,000, and Bellevue expects to put the project out to bid this fall, and we would pay the, we'd be reimbursing Bellevue at the end for, and it is, we, the agreement is paid for up to $275,000. The action that council is taking today would approve the funding, like a council to add this project as a CIP project, as well as approving, signing the ILA with Bellevue.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Sala Houdin?
Yep, thank you so much, and I appreciate that clarification that it's up to $275,000. I think in reading it, I was concerned that if estimate was wrong, that it could go upwards, and you know, if it was a million, would we be indebted to that? So, I appreciate that. Will that be called out somewhere a little bit more clearly? And then is there a contingency of, you know, if we, like, if it does go over 275, will it be called out that it's explicitly Bellevue, City of Bellevue that will be covering that?
Well, it is a City of Bellevue project, so I can clarify that in the documents, but we, I will make sure it is in the next time we have council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nuueva Camina?
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart, actually. Councilmember Sala Houdin had asked the question that I was going to. Thank you.
Wonderful. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. So if I'm remembering this correctly and looking at the map correctly, Redmond is responsible for the northbound traffic, and Bellevue is responsible for the southbound traffic. Is that correct?
Part of the, part of the northbound of the intersection, yes. That's, we cut the...
Through the intersection, yeah. It's very awkward city boundary lines, yes. So is this for, I know, I know it was specifically talking about sidewalk improvements. Is it, in the map, it looks like it's the intersection, but the sidewalks aren't necessarily incorporated in that? So is it intersection and sidewalk improvements?
It's more of, they had a paving project, and when you pave a project, you know, we have to, they do ADA improvements. So the question was to us is, do you want us to include the intersection in the project? And for us, the, the pavement is at the point where paving would improve.
Absolutely would, yes.
So to us, it's, well, if you're going to do the project, why not? And it is, we would, we would want them to do it, we would want them to do their, our portion of the intersection, so it seems like win-win.
Got it. And then, on the accessibility aspect of things, is there any change happening to the approach for the curb cuts, or the mechanisms to signal the lights, or is it straight up just?
Just.
Curb cuts, replacing them how they are as it stands?
Well, they would make them ADA compliant, and that's, that's the minimum of that, what we've, that's what the ILA talks about right now. And so approving this right now would help us. We would, Adnan is online right now, and he would be part of the design process moving forward and get approval.
Okay, thanks.
Other council members? Any questions? Okay, I'll, I'll just go ahead and say for my part, thank you so much Deputy Director Garcia for making sure we have a chance to add this to the CIP. I think the one piece that's still outstanding for me is these unallocated transportation CIP dollars. I'd like to at least be able to see a balance of what those dollars currently look like as we move forward with this, so do you have that information?
I don't have it today.
Okay. So for my part, I guess I would be fine moving this to consent as long as the council was able to, to see a healthy, a healthy amount in those unallocated transportation CIP dollars prior to that vote. Are there any other questions from the council, or any objections to this item otherwise moving to consent? No? Okay, awesome. Well, I appreciate the chance to be neighborly with our, with our peers over in Bellevue, so thanks so much. All right, moving on to item number three. This is approval of a consultant agreement with Consoor for the pavement management project on Northeast 24th Street from West Lake Sammamish Parkway to 172nd Avenue Northeast. This item is also under consideration for consent on June 18th.
Well, this is probably the least complicated of the three items tonight. You know, Consoor was selected through a competitive advertised RFP process. This project includes also water, sewer, and storm replacement with three miles of paving, and upgrades existing streetlights to LED.
Thank you. And are there questions from the council on this one? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. This is no small project. This is going to be a lot of work, so I really appreciate this being brought forward, and I noticed that it talked about bike lane improvements, but it wasn't necessarily specific, and my computer's being very slow, so I can't find the exact spot as to what I was referencing in my notes here. But I, we've, we've been talking a lot about making sure that the, the bike lanes in this area are getting people down to West Lake Sammamish, because it's a very popular riding segment, to get to Merrimore Park, to get into Bellevue, to future light rail. So not seeing what the improvements are for the bike lane on what is a very popular road to be used, hoping you can tell us more about what that's going to look like.
If I, existing is bike lanes, right? Mike, do you want to answer, are they, are we adding wider, or, because our standard is wider than probably what is there right now? Mike?
And I think this is a three-lane road, right? Are we looking at potentially removing that middle lane?
Well, Mike, Mike can answer more specifically.
I'll try. Good afternoon, council. Mike Haley, Public Works. So we have a conceptual striping plan from our Transportation Operations Group that is part of the scope. It's not well-defined yet, but it will include bike lane additions on each side of the road, as well as some turn lanes, which are not really present in the current configuration. I think it's basically a, a big turn lane down the middle, and two lanes on going up down the hill. Hopefully, we'll have a smaller, narrower look when we're done.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is less prioritizing cars having an entire lane that's not likely used, hopefully, and more prioritizing space for safe biking.
That's my understanding. Again, it's a conceptual plan at this point. We can update you as we get further along in design.
Okay. I, I would just throw my hat in the ring for the highest level of bike safety, because that is a very, very popular route. And you know, as we talked about, making sure that we have these very clearly defined arterials so that folks can get to these major roadways, feel really safe on those roadways, even if it's a little bit out of their way, they're going to feel more comfortable going that way because it's the highest level of protection we can provide.
I think we have a lot of different ways that we can do that now. I mean, I think we've done a lot of things at the city. Now that we have, we're approving the design contract, so Mike can lead the design, and we will have very hearty conversations on what we can do without expanding the curb to curb width, but there are some things that we can do.
Yeah. Like thinking extra wide striping, flex posts, armadillos, any of those options I think would be great for this particular roadway.
We can discuss as we get going on the, we just want to start.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Councilmember Fields, welcome.
Did I raise my hand?
Yes, you did.
Oh. I didn't mean to, but since I did, and since you called on me, I would incur with Councilmember Forsyth. I, I guess my question is, will council have a chance to see, once we're past conceptual phase and into design? Maybe the bigger, more direct question is, how can, at some point, council actually weigh in with some authority on what this design will end up looking like?
I don't see anything wrong with bringing the concept, like 30% to council for you, especially at, like a TPW, for you to look at it.
I would, I would insist on that. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Okay, any objection to this item going to consent on June 18th? Wonderful. Well, thank you so much Deputy Director, we appreciate having you here today. We're going to switch now to some items with planning and community development. Item number four on our agenda is a quasi-judicial item for the adoption of the Garbino plat, which is presented today for consideration of the June 18th consent agenda. Presenting, or introducing the item, rather, today is Director Carol Helen, welcome.
Thank you, Presiding Officer Stewart. Good evening, council members. It's nice to see you. We're here from the Development Services side of our shop. It's still planning and community development, but just to make clear, to bring up this proposal before you, and I'm joined by Andy Cho, who is the manager of our Development Engineering Group, to present this item.
Good evening, President Officer Stewart, and members of city councils. I am here today to present the adoption of Garbino final plat, to request the council approval to place it on the consent agenda for June 18. This Garbino plat will create 14 single-family residential lots, consisting of 12 lots for detached units, two lots with the attached unit, one designated for affordable housing, and two check for open space access and utilities. It also includes a public dedication for all common improvements. Staff has reviewed the final plat's material documents and fully examined the list of conditions and details in the Hearing Examiner, October 23, 2020 findings and conclusion and decision. We have determined that the final plat of the Garbino property complies with all the conditions and requirements outlined in the Roman RCW, actually, 58170, and Roman zoning code 2174030C. Additionally, the applicant has provided a financial guarantee for the acceleration of all required plat improvements, which has been accepted by the city. It is important to note that while this project is currently under construction, the final plat approval does not imply an acceptance of the improvement themselves. However, approval of the final plat will allow the applicant to officially record the plat with the King County Records Office, facilitating the creation of the new lots and the application of the building permits. I will here, available here to answer any question you may have, and request that you place the adoption of the Garbino plat on the consent agenda for June 18.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cho and Director Helen. Questions from the council? Council President Kritzler?
Thank you very much for the presentation. One question that I had was around the tree plan for this property. It mentions that all, that all healthy landmark trees be maintained, and 35% of all healthy significant trees be retained, but it does, does note that they would remove six landmark trees. Are those, so does that, that mean that the six ones they're proposing to remove are not healthy?
No, you are able to move landmark trees under certain conditions when they're located, for instance, in areas that are assigned for the actual unit to be constructed, or also when assigned to access locations and utility easements. So, and I am relatively certain that those trees have been removed because this project is already under construction.
Got it. Yeah, so, yeah, so that's, this is the, the final plat, and that's helpful. Actually, can you give us just a quick, since obviously this timeline has been going on for quite a while, 2020 Hearing Examiner decision, can you give us just a little bit of the timelines so that we have the context of, of this decision within the, the larger timeline as well?
I'm hoping Andy might be able to tell you about that.
Where some projects at, that's helpful to know, they're already constructing.
Sure. So this project has received the CCL, so the Hearing Examiner approval is land use approval, and then after that, they have a, we call it CCL approval, which is a construction CFO review. So they got their permit for the construction around 2021, and then they started the construction, and during that time, they're preparing also the final plat. And this project is kind of in the middle of the COVID timeframe during the term. So, and then right now is, they are, the infrastructure is closely done, which means that all the water sewer and pipe and some of the road, like pavement, information, are already installed. So they're waiting for probably final inspection, but before, I mean, they, before they, they need to sell the lot, they need to get a subdivision. So right now is, this is the final process for the plating. So once they get the subdivision done and final plat, and they were able to submit a building permit application, and they can start to building homes.
Got it. So the whole process does take a relatively elongated period of time. So as Andy noted, the Hearing Examiner does an evaluation of the plat against all the zoning code requirements, and that gets approved, that gets approved ahead of time. There is an option for appeal to the city council, but those, that plat didn't go to the city council, did it?
No.
No. And then, so it, without an appeal, the Hearing Examiner decision was final on the land use approval, and then, as he noted, there's a bunch of engineering work that has to go on, how to put, accommodate stormwater and all the other things that are necessary to facilitate development on the property. And then what the final plat process does is it requires staff to go back through validation that all the conditions of the land use approval that was approved by the Hearing Examiner, and the engineering requirements have all been met. And basically, the, that final approval that is required by council, which we have been asked by the master builders, actually, and other folks that do development of plats like this in the past, in hoping that they can make it administrative as opposed to council, because in fact, there isn't a lot of discretion for council to exercise at this point. The plat is done, the engineering is done, the thing is under construction. The plat actually just enables the developer to construct the homes, because it actually is the final decision on creating the lots. And then it allows them to start constructing the homes and actually pre-selling them, for instance, and they can't do that until that's done. But they can do that in advance, for instance, of us doing our final inspection and acceptance of some of the public infrastructure, because, for instance, they'll oftentimes build homes sequentially, and they will wait to put, for instance, the last asphalt lift in on the road before, until all of the homes are done, so they don't essentially tear up the asphalt while they're constructing the homes. So that's basically the final thing when they get that inspection.
Thank you for that clarity. Hopefully, it's helpful to my fellow council members as well, I think. So what I'm hearing from you is that they, that they've already laid a lot, the groundwork, really, and the, the engineering that's needed, but this is kind of the last thing before they actually can decide how many homes go onto those lots.
It's the last thing, actually, the homes, the number of homes has already been decided. Everything has been done, it's just an acceptance that the, a process step that the council needs to take to enable them to sell those lots and have them addressed for public sale.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? And I, I will thank the director for helping us with the timeline on this, especially since this process began before so many of us were, we're sitting here in the room. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, thank you. So I understand everything that was just said. This is a quasi-judicial decision by the council, correct?
Yes.
So I've not, I don't recall ever seeing a quasi-judicial decision going to consent. Have we done that before, and is there anything restricting us from doing that?
No, actually, you did receive a presentation, for instance, just recently on the, the Rosewood Court, which is actually on consent for this evening, and actually, the presentation we got on the development agreement last week. It's relatively common for you to put things on consent after your questions have been answered, of course.
Right. Yeah, I wasn't there last week, so I've not seen it before. I'll take your word that there are no procedural constraints, but it is a little bit odd for me, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thanks, just curious what size the houses are.
What size are the houses?
What sizes?
Square footage? Are they pretty big, or?
May I add on to your question, Councilmember Anderson? Because I had a similar question. We're, as, as Deputy, excuse me, as Director Helen said, you know, there's not a lot of discretion here for us at the moment, but to me, this is a storytelling opportunity, and we're a city that likes to pride ourselves on using all the available tools for housing. So 14 plots and 2.6 acres, it strikes me that these homes might be somewhat modestly sized and modestly achievable for families, and I wanted to ask how much of a stretch that was in that assumption, so building on Councilmember Anderson's question.
We'll have, we'll have to send you an email and let you know. The plat actually shows the size of the lots, but doesn't necessarily show the exactly size of the homes. Those will come in in building permits, but we can find out that information.
And then just to clarify, there's two of those homes that are single-family affordable? Is that the?
One.
Just one? Okay, thank you.
Per our inclusionary zoning, yeah. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Anderson, and allowing me to add on. Other questions from the council? Okay, so we have one item we'd love to hear back on, on the intended size of the homes. Are there any objections to this item going to consent on June 18th? Wonderful. Mr. Cho, I think we'll be, we'll be back on the 18th and have this on consent. Thank you so much. Appreciate you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our fifth and final item of the evening is an update on the Transportation Master Plan status update. And as the team comes to the table, this item is going to be introduced by Deputy Director Allen, and I'd love to have you take a moment also to, to introduce your colleague once again, who is helping lead this process for us. Thanks.
Thank you. First, I'm going to describe a little bit about the item, but then I am going to do an introduction and get some time, and then we'll hand it back over. So today, we are seeking council's approval and direction to put the status update for the Transportation Master Plan on the July 16 business meeting for a staff report. So a quick reminder, the Transportation Master Plan, also lovingly called the TMP, is kind of the next layer of strategic and functional planning efforts, which sets really the strategies of how we achieve the vision, which we've been talking about over this last year, and the comprehensive plan, particularly in the transportation element. So as I like to say, we've got our comprehensive plan, then thinking of the TMP nestled under that, of how we really get to the vision we're talking about, and then there'll later be other plans that are underneath those, but that, this is the topic. But this is the topic we're, have been discussing. So also, since we have two new councilmembers since we last came with an update for the TMP, this division was last here in November of 2023, and we discussed the bicycle design guide and took your feedback and actually now have a final draft of that, which we'll be attaching as a part of the staff report, but won't be going over because we've moved on to next topics. So this update is really going to be focusing on giving an overview, since it's been a little bit of time around the status of the TMP, what's going to be completed, what's still left to be completed, an outline of the chapters that we're hoping to really address and then fill out, and then giving an overview of the upcoming community engagement calendar, and then also going to be sharing some of the work we're doing with the Safer Streets Action Plan as well. So with that, I'm very excited to introduce our recently hired transportation planning manager, Michael Hens. And he is occupying the position of Deputy Director Vanji Garcia, who we just previously had here earlier tonight, who's in Public Works. And Michael was previously at Tool Design, where he already has had his fingerprints on the TMP and actually helped draft the bicycle design guide, which you reviewed in November. So we're very excited to have Michael here. He's very passionate about giving people transportation options, and he really walks the talk by commuting from Seattle by both bike and bus every day. So I'll turn it over to Michael to share a little bit more about himself and then what you can expect as a part of the staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Director Allen. Pleasure to be here and to meet all of you and, yeah, present some of the great work that our team is doing in transportation planning and engineering. Definitely eager to support the city and its transportation vision. A lot of great work has already been done, and what we're looking to do is really leverage light rail and the thriving local economy here to really deliver on the community vision for equitable multimodal transportation in Redmond. Work, as you know, work on the TMP update was started as part of Redmond 2050 with a focus on the transportation-related components that are required in the comprehensive plan per the GMA, including high-level policies, roadway functional classification, baseline system of existing conditions, and the transportation facilities plan. So those, those pieces are more or less done and in the comprehensive plan update. And as you know, through the Redmond 2050 process, the Redmond community was very broadly engaged and helped shape the transportation policies that are really laying the foundation for the transportation master plan. The TPNE, the Transportation Planning and Engineering Division, are currently engaged in building on the work done for Redmond 2050, specifically focusing on developing an integrated multimodal complete streets network that supports low-carbon and equitable transportation options. We're also focused on parking and curb space management policies and integrating recommendations from the technology assessment that was, was done last year throughout the Transportation Master Plan. So in addition to the transportation master plan that we like to update you on in the staff report, also want to update you on the Safer Streets Action Plan as just a reminder and for those new councilmembers. City Redmond received a USDOT grant to develop a safety action plan. And this plan will build on the work done for the local road safety plan. I know there's a lot of, a lot of safety stuff going on. But really, the idea behind the safety action plan is to take a safe system approach. This is an approach endorsed by federal highways, a multi-layered approach that's not just focused on infrastructure, but focused on safe people, safe vehicles, safer speeds, and also safe streets, which is the infrastructure piece. So we look forward to updating you on that as well. We've had some great, great work done on that recently with doing some road safety assessments in the city, and, and we are convening a task force, kind of an interdepartmental task force, to help guide that, that work. So with that, I'd love to open it up to any questions that you might have on the transportation master plan or the Safer Streets Action Plan that we can be sure to include and address in the staff report.
Thank you so much, Michael. Really great to have you, and thank you so much for helping tee us up for the staff report. Questions from the council that you'd like to see answered on our July 16 business meeting? Council President Kritzler.
Not exactly a question, but first of all, welcome. So excited to have you on the team, moving, although you have, it sounds like you've been working with the team already, so, but officially within Team Redmond. Just a comment to the councils that we did have the first convening of our flexible transit, multimodal transit, Bike Head Committee Subcommittee recently, and discussed kind of how this work fits in with some of the discussions there. And I think, just to give an update, I think our hope out of that committee as initial goals is to complement what we're going to see with this TMP work, with also looking, hopefully, at more of like a shorter-term vision as well of kind of what does it look like in the next year or two to prep for solving for that first last mile with the arrival of light rail? And just look forward to more of those conversations and hopefully having you join in on those as well, and then getting, getting more of the vision at this upcoming staff report on the, on the TMP, and especially getting to see some of the updates to the bicycle plan.
Thank you. Other questions? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. So I don't quite know what questions to ask because there's not a ton to go off of here. So my request would be that we can get that presentation and information before the July 20, or was it 18th, meeting, so that we can do some pre-work to have those questions ready for you, emailed into you prior to that meeting or ready to go at that meeting? Because I know it's a lot to read through, so.
Yeah, and I'll just add to, and I was actually talking to Michael about this today, where it really, we're trying to get you a level set. So it might not be that there's a lot of meaty topics that we're diving into for the staff report. It's, as you know, we mentioned just like six different plans here, and it's trying to give you a visual of how everything is interconnected and works together. So that's, it'll be really more of kind of level set for us with the council of where work is, where questions that you've asked in the past are going to be coming still forward, and at what level those things will be addressed in these various different kinds of plans. So we will definitely work on trying to get you things early. It will be less of the meaty substantive for the staff report and more of a, here's where we're going, and here's when you're going to get into some of that meat at these different stages.
And you want us to be coalescing around the vision in that?
Exactly, yeah. And then feel like, yes, this is, we're, we're feeling like nothing's been forgotten in, as a part of this work.
Got it. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you for the question. I'll just add, there is a line in our memo here about the appendices of the transportation element of Redmond 2050, having a lot of that. So if that's a place folks want to go back and really just double-check, that's a meaty place to go and do that. Councilmember Sal Houdin.
Thank you. And not a question from my side as well, but maybe a topical focus, just to echo off of Council President Kritzler, specifically on the item, talking about that first last mile. I know especially with the opening of the light rail on the east side, folks have been reaching out even more now, specifically to me, and I'm sure to the rest of council, about that first and last mile and the connections that can be made there. And so just exploring all of that opportunity and that discussion, would love to get more information on that. So, thank you.
Great.
And that's a good point of the work of, there's the TMP, which is more long-range, as Council President Kritzler was sharing, and then the work, there's a lot of work that we're doing that we're not necessarily always bringing to the council at the forefront, but we can create documentation and are working on what is, what are staff doing for the preparation of light rail? And that you can then have more information to be able to share.
Thank you. Other questions for the staff report? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation for what, how you're approaching this with council on the, the vision and understanding of the broad vision. What might be helpful, I don't know if it's possible, but maybe take different parts of the city and give examples, you know, sort of similar to like what a use case would look like, what's, what a resident might experience coming from Overlake, what a resident might experience from Education Hill as potential transportation opportunities. I think narrative and pictures and stories tend to make a vision come to life. So if you can do that, that would be awesome.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. And that would be particularly, not necessarily for the TMP update, but more of a, what are we doing to prepare for light rail update? Just making sure I put it in the correct box. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Nauviva Camina.
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment. Thank you for all of the work that you've already done on this. It's been a huge, heavy lift, and looking forward to learning more about our safety in our transit-oriented, oriented development areas, our TOD areas, and making sure that our pedestrians and our cyclists and multimodals are staying safe even within that, that last. I know that many of our residents have approached me around, being a downtown resident, you know, just the safety of our, our students when they're getting back and forth to school, folks who are out on an evening jog, running around downtown, and the, the safety that they have when it comes to pedestrian or cyclist, cyclists against vehicles and making sure that we're safe. So thank you so much for the work that you've done.
Wonderful. Seeing no other questions, we are looking forward to our staff report with you on the 16th of July. This is our last item on the agenda, so I'll just briefly mention, since we have time for the viewing public, come back at 7 o'clock. We've got three special orders of the day as we kick off Pride Month and have a presentation from some local students, as well as the team from Evergreen Health. But otherwise, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.